I call to order the City of Woodenville Planning Commission's special meeting for Wednesday, October 9, 2024. May we have the roll call, please?
Chair Stadler.
Here.
Vice Chair Yarbrav. Commissioner Young. Commissioner Chernomontakov.
Here.
Commissioner Mesa.
Here.
Commissioner Krebs.
Here.
Thank you. Both Commissioner Young and Vice Chair Yarbrav have notified us they would not be able to attend tonight. May we have a motion to excuse them?
Second. I move to excuse Commissioner Yarbrav and Commissioner Young.
We have a motion by Commissioner Mesa and a second by Commissioner Krebs to excuse Vice Chair Yarbrav and Commissioner Young. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Alright, they are excused. I will mention that Commissioner Chernomontakov is joining us remotely tonight, and we all please stand and join me in the flag salute. Alright, thank you. That will take us to public comments. Is anybody signed in? Alright, we have one person that's signed in, and it's Marilyn Aruber-Brona? Yeah, come forward, state your name, whether you live in the city of Woodenville or not, and you have three minutes.
I live in Woodenville. I live in Woodenville. I live at Greenbrier Senior Heights, which is right up the road by Cascade Recycling.
For the record, can you state your name?
Marilyn Aruberina.
Thank you.
Today is my 82nd birthday. No joke. I'm not kidding around here. I sound like Joe Biden, but you guys are not going to kick me out of Woodenville because my brain is still working. I'm here to talk about rent protection, and although that's not exactly why you guys are here, I wanted to get on the record. Although I likely will be dead in 20 years, I do want to live here 15 more years, but I don't have enough dollars to live here that long. The rents are determined here by the market and the average gross median income for the county. And my question is, why should we elders on fixed income have our rent determined by the income of active workers, tech usually? And the average income is $120,000. So, I live in Greenbrier Senior Heights, and it has been serving low-income, fixed-income seniors for 20 years. It's tax credit. Since tech, a kind of inflated income dominates Woodenville, my rent has nearly doubled in six years. As of now, my rent is the same as my income. At this rate of raising rent, I will not be able to stay here. I'm partially handicapped, and I can't move out of state. I've been in Seattle Eastside since 1989. It is my understanding that utility costs come from the city, and maybe some subsidy could happen here. Just as a side, most people at Greenbrier's yearly income is $25,000, so we're in competition for the spaces, and so that's basically it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming forward and giving us a public comment. That's the only person that has signed in. Anybody else care to make public comment? Please come forward, state your name, whether you live in the city limits or not, and you will have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Ahmad Amiri, and I have lived in the city of Woodenville for more than 35 years. As noted in memo to the comprehensive plan, minimum lot size regulation significantly influenced the price of housing and impact. I want to add that the city imposes other regulations that have an equal impact. In my case, although I own an acre, property zone R8 with SUR and in the middle of the city, I cannot develop it due to outdated regulations regarding private roads. Currently, private roads are limited to maximum of four homes. In my case, this effectively gives my property a one-acre minimum lot size. With no alternative, homeowner on the private streets are incentivized to tear down the perfectly good homes and replace them with a massive million-dollar compounds, allowing additional infill is clearly a better outcome. As I have mentioned several times, Woodenville standards on private roads are among the most inflexible and restrictive in this state. There is no need for this level of restriction. Addressing this issue could be done simply and would help address the city goals of increasing its housing stock and affordability. If the city wants to meet these goals, it should make and address this issue a top priority. I hope you do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mary. Anybody else care to make public comment at this time? Alright, seeing no one, that will take us to our business and discussion item. We only have one item, and that's a public hearing on the comprehensive plan periodic review, 2024 draft comprehensive plan. So, we will open the public hearing. We will hear a staff report. The commissioners will ask any questions, and then we will allow for public testimony. I will let you know that we are planning on continuing this hearing to October 23rd. So, you will have an additional opportunity to speak to the comprehensive plan before this body on the 23rd of October. With that, may we have a motion to open the public hearing?
I move to open the public hearing and accept public testimony.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Krebs and a second by Commissioner Mesa to open the public hearing and take public testimony. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Nay? And abstained. Alright, the public hearing is open. Can we please have a staff report?
Alright, good evening, Chair and members of the Planning Commission. So, as mentioned, this is a public hearing on the 2024 draft comprehensive plan. This is involving our periodic review that we're doing. What I'm going to do here is, I'm not going to dive into a lot of great detail. I'm just going to kind of highlight the draft comprehensive plan. At the last planning commission meeting, we kind of did do a little bit of a deep dive, and we've been actually talking about through a lot of this stuff through the better part of this last year. So, I'm just going to kind of highlight for the planning commission as well as for the audience. I do have some comments. There was a supplemental staff report that I had sent to you on Monday that talks about some comments that we received, both from Fish and Wildlife and from the Affordable Housing Committee from King County. And so, I do want to talk a little bit about some of that with you as well and get some policy direction as part of this presentation and as part of this public hearing. And then we get through that, then at the end of this, we can then take public testimony. If you, at any point, have questions while I'm going through this, feel free to ask those questions. Also, if you think that it may work better, that, you know, when we kind of talk about the county and state comments, if we want to come back and talk about those more later after public testimony, we can do it as well. So, it's kind of flexible in how you want to do this, but the idea today is just kind of highlight. I want to ask some questions of you about from those comments we received, and then give the public also an opportunity to provide some testimony. Alright, so just kind of this reminder, why are we doing the periodic review? We're doing this because the Growth Management Act basically requires us to do this. Cities in King County are required to adopt comprehensive plans consistent with the Growth Management Act and the countywide plan. Just kind of as a reminder, comp plan is looking at a 20-year planning horizon. The way I often describe it to folks is, it's basically the city's business plan. It's the best way to kind of think about this. So, the Growth Management Act requires us to perform this periodic review of its plan and our development regulations, and the main things we're looking at are changes in state law, and in this case, there are some big changes happening because of planning housing laws that the state's now requiring us to incorporate into our plans. Then also, we take a look at changes in conditions such as land use patterns, housing and job growth. And then the one thing just to note for everybody is, we do have a deadline to complete this by the end of this year. I don't think we're going to make it, but as long as we keep making a good faith effort to keep moving forward on this, we should be okay. We definitely do have some drop-dead deadlines coming up next year, where if we don't, there will be some consequences on some things. But in general, as long as we're making an effort to get our plan updated and stuff, which we're trying to do, we should be good to go on that. Alright, so this next, this is kind of a slide I showed before. This is the new look organization. You can see the different chapters. We have an introduction, vision, land use and community design, housing, economic development, park recreation and open space, transportation, circulation, capital facilities and utilities, and the city's vision, the natural environment, our shoreline master program, climate change and resiliency. And each of these chapters contains a discussion, in some cases has data and information that kind of informs the goals and policies that are at the heart of each one of these chapters. So, we'll start out with the introduction and the vision. So, most of these chapters you have seen, this was one chapter I don't believe you'd seen before. This is new, and this is basically the introduction to the plan. It contains our vision statement. It also has 11 guiding principles that went into the comprehensive plan that supports the other chapters in there. There's also, we did a little bit of cleaning up on the planning areas. One of the big things, we used to identify the greatest neighborhoods as a joint planning area. Problem is, we're actually, it's not identified in any county plan as a joint, or excuse me, any county plan as part of Woodenville's urban growth area, but we have done joint planning with Snohomish County, so we kind of converted it over from being a part of our urban growth boundary to just being a joint planning area because there has been a lot of effort in that, and that reflects actually what has occurred on it. And then it also highlights a bunch and summarizes a bunch of the characteristics of Woodenville. Alright, so just again, high level, the first, probably the most important chapter in our comp plan is this land use and community design. This is the heart of the comp plan. All of the other chapters, all the other elements, everything else actually comes out of this because this sets the land use pattern for the city. So, our zoning is fundamentally built out of what comes out of this chapter. It also includes annexation and subarea plans, and very importantly, as I was mentioning, it's got this future land use plan map that our zoning map is based on, and it gives us a purpose and description of each of these future land use designations. I'm not going to go through all these again with you tonight. They're in the plan. We talked about these a little bit more in depth at our last planning commission meeting, but of course, if you do have any questions, feel free to be asking me those questions. Alright, this is the map I mentioned. The main thing to note on this is that it basically follows our current comprehensive plan. There are a couple of changes. The main changes, we talked about this before, the water district asked for their property over there by the Sumamish River to get rezoned because they are potentially looking to have a maintenance facility they'd like to maybe be able to do on that property. So, we're looking to reconvert that back into industrial zoning, what it used to be originally, and then it was converted to Central Business District, asking for it to go back to industrial zoning. The Woodenville Cemetery has a Central Business District zoning designation, but it's a cemetery, doesn't really, we don't have any plans to allow commercial development, so we're looking to convert this over into a parks designation as part of helping to preserve that history of that cemetery. And then importantly, the East Rail Trail System, that's the abandoned right-of-way for our rail line, and I think we've talked a little bit about this. Essentially, we want to convert this into a park because this is kind of becoming part of our park system, is kind of the big plans on this. And then the East Rail Mixed Use, which is important because this is helping us with some of our requirements that we'll talk about in another chapter we've kind of talked about previously as well. Alright, so that's the map. Things that are having a big impact, middle housing, we've talked about this quite a bit. There's this new requirement that we have to incorporate middle housing requirements into our comprehensive plan. One of the big changes out of this is that we're going away from density standards, the number of housing units per acre, and we are now converting over into what's called units per lot, and it doesn't matter what the light size is. So, the acre thing no longer has relevancy. It's more about minimum lot sizes, and then the types of housing units, like whether it's single-family detached or whether it is duplexes, or in the case of some of the higher densities, then we're talking about triplexes, multiplexes, multifamily, and those kinds of things. So, that's one of the big changes that we're making these descriptions. We are, though, basing these descriptions and using kind of the current descriptions and stuff to help shape the form and stuff that we have going with this, other than to the extent where we had to allow for at least the minimum two units, which is a new requirement under the Growth Management Act. We are making those changes, but in general, we did try to maintain the shape and form of most of these zones and what they enable, and then also incorporate the requirements of the middle housing. And again, this kind of shows you what the, like, for example, the Woodland Residential, which is our one zone, the purpose statement, and then the description on it, and again, a lot more details. You can take a look at it in the plan. Housing, this is also a chapter being very much affected by both middle housing as well as new requirements for us to plan for housing at the different income levels. So, a lot of changes happening as a result of these new state requirements that include looking at housing conditions, including needs, and we're evaluating household income and cost burden. That's an important piece that we have to take into account. We also needed to take a look at whether there has been, whether our plan creates disadvantages for protected groups in the community, and then we need to be looking to reduce barriers for a wider variety of folks, as well as then looking at planning housing by income groups and making sure the housing that can support those different end groups, that we are making sure that there is sufficient number of those being provided by Woodenville, and there's some assignments by the state that we have to meet in doing these planning numbers. So, again, this should look familiar to most everybody. This is the table, then the assigned numbers, and then one of the things we learned from Commerce's guidance that in this new mixed-use zone that originally had its roots in economic development, it had this additional advantage that if we enable, like, low-rise and mid-rise multifamily housing in this zone, that we can count these housing units, the capacity being enabled by this, we get to count those towards our target numbers in satisfying our GMA requirements. And so, that's a big piece of this. There will be some follow-up because one of the things we are talking about with this EMU, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about this in another slide here shortly, about this being a mandatory inclusionary zoning. So, not only are we going to be enabling, like, multifamily housing being a key part of this, but there will be mandatory requirements for affordable housing that will also be built into this zone as well. Let's see here. So, this kind of then is transitioning into one of the things I wanted to kind of get some feedback from you on, and this happens to deal with the comments we got back. Because one of the things we had to do was, we had to submit our housing chapter to King County Affordable Housing Committee, and they've given us kind of this preliminary view, which I've shared with you, and provided some feedback on it, on some of the things that they noted, I think we'll want to incorporate, particularly like in terms of the data points. We actually have the information. We just didn't have it in the comp plan. We have it, like, in some of our other plans. I think we'll pull some of that stuff in there, and we'll make those updates, and you'll see that when we come back later this month in the follow-up on this. But one of the things I want to note too, before I get into one of my big policy questions here, is that the stuff that we got from the county staff currently is just informal. They're still kind of going through this, and they're refining stuff. They are going to be presenting their findings and their comments to the Affordable Housing Committee at the November 7th meeting, and it will be at that meeting where then a formal comment letter will be coming back from the county. I would note that that comment letter is not necessarily binding on things that we have to do. They're just identifying things that they think may be shortcomings or things that may need additional, should be probably potentially taken a look further at. Ultimately, though, each jurisdiction will decide how they're going to respond, but just want you to be aware that this will be something that'll be coming out. And you already saw from the memo that I gave you that I kind of did an evaluation of some of their preliminary comments that they did give us and some of the thoughts on that.
Robert?
Sure.
Go back that one slide? Well, you don't have to go back. Who sits on the Affordable Housing Committee? What's the makeup of that?
Elected officials that I think come from the King County Planning Council. I'm not sure exactly the breakdown, but I know that there's elected officials who sit on that. And the chair of that is Claudia, I believe, is the chair of that committee. Yeah, so, and then I'm not sure who all else is on it, but yeah, it's a group of elected, but then they have a staff that actually then supports them, and the staff does the review, and then we'll make a presentation on their comments and submit that. But ultimately, it is the committee that votes on whether to release that letter or whether to modify it or anything like that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I had the same question when you sent that out, and I did look it up, and it was elected officials from the different jurisdictions within King County. Some from Seattle, I think, from Kirkland, maybe Bellevue, and a couple of others were in there.
Yeah, I think it's a subcommittee of the King County Planning Council, which is made up of elected officials throughout the entire county. So, there's a larger body, and then this is a subcomponent of that.
Commissioner Chernomontakov?
Just process-wise, do they review this plan every year, or it's the first time they provided the comments?
Yeah, so, this is a new requirement. It was adopted in the countywide planning policy, so not every county is going to necessarily have this requirement. But in the adopt, when they did amendments, because I think I mentioned this to the planning commission before, there are multiple layers that our comp plan has to follow. It starts out with the GMA requirements, and then we get into countywide planning policies. A lot of those countywide planning policies are actually derived from the Puget Sound Regional Council. So, you've got state, then you've got this regional, then you've got the countywide planning policies. In the case of the countywide planning policies, they adopted a policy here that has this requirement for King County jurisdictions to submit to the committee, and then they kind of outline what are the things. And I think maybe my next slide may actually summarize this. We'll take a look here in a moment, in a couple of slides here, but summarizes what they're supposed to be reviewing for and providing their comments and stuff. And I will note also, as part of this, it's not necessarily going to be back to the Housing Committee on this, but there is also a requirement every five years, actually a reporting, an annual reporting, and then every five years, there's going to be a reevaluation of our housing and stuff as well that takes place. That five years is actually more of a GMA requirement, but the reporting stuff is actually more specific. I think other counties will probably do the same thing, but King County has specific reporting requirements that will have to happen as part of these countywide planning policies as well. Does that answer your question?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, and I already mentioned this. I think some of the things, there's some data points I mentioned that I think we'll pull those into it. There's also on the action plan, I think we may want to look to add a couple more action items. This may get refined a little bit more, but this was the language that's in there, unless you have any questions on it, recommending that this be incorporated into the next round of the draft. So, before I go to the next thing that gets into some other stuff on this, any questions on this or any concerns or anything?
Commissioner Mesa?
Just one quick clarification. Are there any mechanisms for accountability if we don't meet any of those targets? Are there any consequences?
Yeah, so, right now, you're talking about the target numbers by the different income groups, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, the best way to answer it is yes and no. So, there's not a definitive answer. We have to show capacity. It's a planning exercise. It's not an actual hard target number, right? There is a, we have to show, though, that we're enabling it. That's the requirements to be met. Having said that, there is going to be this monitoring that takes place, not just for Woodenville, but throughout the county, as to how these new policies, these new requirements, how are they working towards, one, promoting more housing production, and, two, promoting housing production that is going to be more available to a wider income band of people. So, there's going to be this ongoing monitoring, and kind of depending on the outcomes of those things, we could potentially see more requirements or less requirements, depending on how it's working, that could come down the road that we may have to then comply with in the future. So, is there, if, for example, if we don't necessarily get our 1,800, I think 12 or whatever, is low-income housing in the next 20 years, that doesn't necessarily mean we are in noncompliance because that's not actually what the purpose of the target numbers are. But there is going to be this evaluation that goes on, and if we're still continuing to see a shortage of housing and affordable housing, then you are going to see efforts by the state legislature as well as probably the county to take further steps to try to promote that production.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright. Yeah, so this is kind of what actually kind of went to your question that you asked about, because some of the things that they did ask in this thing was findings from the racial disparate impact analysis memo, which, one of the things it noted was that lot sizes, I don't think this is, you know, flashy news or anything. I think everybody kind of knows this intrinsically, that basically lot sizes does play a significant influence in the price of housing, and that our large lots, even when you look at it, you can correlate our large lots to basically where the folks that have the higher area medium incomes are able to live versus where folks on the lower area of medium income, which is primarily our Latino and Hispanic populations, we tend to see those either in like in our multifamily zones or in our, like, our R6 zoning, where we've kind of got actually a lot of older housing and stuff in those areas, where we see them kind of concentrated. And so, the discussion was, that was a finding in there. How are we addressing that? Middle housing is one of those things. We aren't proposing to reduce minimum lot sizes. That wasn't any direction I've heard from planning commissioner or council, but we are looking, you know, in terms of allowing more housing types and stuff to try to address some of this. So, we're not standing still because we're not reducing the lot sizes, but we are taking other measures and things to try to address that, and that's part of what our response will be to the Housing Committee in some of those efforts and stuff on that. But this is an important finding, one of the things they did ask about in their questions. And then the other thing they raised that I wanted to kind of get your feedback on because this has actually been some stuff that planning commissioners talked about. Council has had some discussions about too, so I want to get an idea about where you might be landing on what you might want your recommendation to look like, and that is this question about the 80% AMI, which is our lower, which is our low-income group. So, we are talking about having mandatory requirements in the new EMU zone, the East Grubics Use Zone, and then there was a discussion about having a mandatory requirement potentially added to the Central Business District. The question I want to pose to the Planning Commission, as you're thinking about what your recommendation may be to the council, is whether you want to expand. Now, don't take this comment from them as saying we have to do this, but I wanted to, there has been conversation around this, so I want to kind of get the Planning Commission's thoughts about in your ultimate recommendation, whether you may want to include consideration of other zoning, and if that's the case, then we may want to modify some of the policies in here to be reflective of that, or if you think you want to just keep it limited to the two mixed-use zones, then the current language we have is fine. So, I'd like to kind of get your thoughts about that a little bit. So, I'll stop talking and kind of get your thoughts on that.
Commissioner Mesa?
Thank you. Yeah, this comment actually is very similar to comments that I have made in the past about the EMU in not creating zones that are exclusive or that promote certain types of people in one area, right? So, what they're suggesting is, and not just in this comment, but the previous comment also, is that we make more areas available or easier for people to move in from all different income levels. So, I think expanding the inclusionary zoning is a good idea, and that's what I have suggested in the past. I would be supportive of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Krebs, do you have anything?
No, I was just going to say that I think this question is kind of something that's come up across a lot of our conversations on housing. I would also be supportive of kind of more of a blanket rule across many of the zones in the city.
Commissioner Chernomontakov?
Yeah, it's, in a way, it's very much connected with discussed last time about a risk of people, of certain group, to just live together and separate from others. I think that's something we want to avoid. So, I think that directions this.
Thank you. I agree. I think that we
Thank you. I I agree. I think that we should expand it throughout more of the areas. I'm not sure initially where, you know, if it's everywhere or just in certain, you know, I'd have to look at that more.
Okay, yeah. So what we can do is what I'll look to do is modify some of the policies to be more expansive. Ultimately, it'll we'll make the final determinations when the development regulations are being worked on. But we'll we'll make it more expansive, and then ultimately we'll get into deeper discussions. Because often it's, you know, this is kind of at that higher level. It's kind of setting the the table for where we're going to go with this. But ultimately, it's when you get into the development regulations is really when the rubber is hitting the road on things. So we'll dig into this in more detail. But from what I'm hearing from you is you would like the policy to be more expansive than just the mixed use zones.
So just so I have a clear understanding of this, what what this would mean if we did it throughout most of the city, for instance, in the R four, we'd have to allow multiunit properties there.
We have to allow the two units.
Right. But this would allow it to be, for instance, up to 10, maybe.
Well, that wasn't the idea here. But the what I was suggesting up in here, so Redmond's approach currently, because Redmond has mandatory inclusionary zoning, and this I want more of this for you guys to be thinking a little bit about. Redmond's model is that they have mandatory inclusionary zoning through almost the entire city. There are some areas they don't have it, but for the majority of the city, this isn't in their comp plan, this minimum number. They did it in their development regulations. But what they do is that any development, whether it's a subdivision, whether it is a mixed use building, or whether it is an apartment building, they have this threshold that says at if you're building 10 or more units, and that includes a subdivision, so 10 or more lots, then you have to incorporate at least 10% of those have to be at a affordability. And I believe 80% is, I think, their cap on, although they have some flexibility on what those how that can break down. Because they have some, if I recall correctly, they've got a couple of options on it. So it's not always 10%. If you do like that around the 50% AMI instead of the 80% AMI. But anyway, but they so they have this approach throughout where they have it mandatory. But I will mention, they don't just say of those 10 units, one of them has to be affordable. They do require one. But then they also give them an additional market rate to help make up for that. Because you got to be also careful, if we're not offering bonuses, particularly like in our R one zone and stuff like that, you're really just making a paper exercise out of it. Because if there isn't some kind of incentive that offsets that, then you're not really going to have anybody that's going to be willing to provide those affordable units. So it's going to still require some kind of incentives to go along with it. And I wanted to give you kind of some examples, showed you the Redmond. And then also, the one of the things with the middle housing, in the jurisdictions that have to do more than two units, they do have a thing, and there were these extra units, you can require those extra units to be affordable units. So there's a couple of different ways that this could potentially be approached. You're not deciding that tonight. We'll get into that more when we get into the development regulations. But I just wanted you to have some thoughts about how some of the ways this could potentially be done.
Okay, thank you. That helps.
Okay. All right. Yeah. And so this other and then this other thing, kind of noted, we actually talked about this, and I just wanted to highlight this. We did talk about the EMU and its proximity to SR 522, and the concerns that come when you're near high traffic areas and stuff. But I did want to note, you know, we've got building codes and nuisance regulations that help address some of this. And particularly in the case of a good part of the Little Bear Creek, but not all of or excuse me, a good part of EMU, but not all of it, but a good part of it, Little Bear Creek actually does create a natural buffer, because there's more than 100 feet, it's actually going to push you actually out, in some cases, to those 300 feet or more, that's kind of recommended and stuff. So we've got some natural barriers to help address some of those concerns that they were raising. But it was something that's been raised also by comments you've received. And we did kind of talk about this back in May, a little bit about it. And I think one of the things I suggesting is, unless there's any concerns that we might, though, just kind of relating to this, maybe add an additional policy in support of, you know, the fact is that we do want to kind of have this in our in our in our thoughts. We do have it in our land use chapter, but I think it's also good to maybe put it in the housing, maybe take some of the language that the countywide planning policy has related to this about, you know, promoting and protecting health and well being of residents by supporting equitable access, and maybe adding this as another policy into this into this chapter.
Any any thoughts on that?
Any thoughts on that? Okay. I just have one or a couple, I guess, on that, that the high quality education from early learning through K through 12, how can we control that as a city? We we can't. So I don't know. I mean, I think, don't we have something about that in somewhere else in the comp plan, talking about advocating or whatever for good education within the schools that are?
I don't know if we have anything that's specific. But I mean, this is just supporting that, you know, it's like our school district, obviously, everybody's very proud of the school district up here and is supporting it.
Right. And then the other thing is fresh and healthy foods. I mean, that's not something that we can really do. I mean, I guess we could put something in the economic section about, you know, trying to, you know, promote that in our city.
Yeah, I mean, it kind of gets like into the community gardens and things like that, as well as trying to promote, you know, stores, having healthy foods and stuff like that.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
I have a question, sir. Oh, do I have to wait?
No, we will get to public test-
It was okay.
We'll get to public testimony after we have the-
Oh, I understand.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay. Okay. And there's a sign up sheet over there if you want to make public comment or public testimony. So any any comments you want to make, you need to do on the sign up sheet when we open the public testimony portion?
Oh, I just this was just a reference to what you're speaking about now. So wait, is that the end?
You can make comment during the the public testimony portion of the hearing. Okay, on anything that we've talked about.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Okay. If you if you want me to, if you think I should, we may want to work with this a little bit more, I can modify this a little bit more and play with it. Like I said, this was kind of taken more from the countywide planning policy directly from it. But I'll kind of take-
I mean, I'm not objecting to to that. I just don't know if that's the right wording or the right place to have it.
Okay. Commissioner Mesa?
Yeah, I I agree that we don't necessarily control a lot of these things, because we're not the ones building them and whatnot. But from a city perspective, I think we can enact policies to make them more accessible, like the one that we talked previously, to expand the exclusionary zoning to all areas. So for for example, from the educational perspective, that is very much determined by where you live. So if we if we make exclusionary zones, then you don't have access to those certain schools and whatnot. So I'm okay with the language. Maybe include some verbiage around expanding the exclusionary zones to promote these things. But I think the goal is a good one overall. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Commissioner Krebs.
Yeah, I'm generally supportive of including language like this. I think it gets at a little bit of some of the concepts of environmental justice that we talked a little bit about a few meetings ago. That was baked into the RCWs out of the 2021 session. I don't think that the comp plan specifically uses the term environmental justice or addresses the issue on point. That's still something I'd like to see kind of, at least the concepts, maybe baked into it a little bit.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So moving on, economic development, we've talked about this. This basically was revised to be consistent with the 2022 Economic Development Plan. Parks, Recreation, Open Space, basically just really minimum edits, because we did an update on this a few years back. And, you know, we may be coming up on the next update on this in the next couple of years. And that would probably be the more appropriate time to look at potentially making changes. But as it is right now, we've adopted this. And if you make changes to the goals and policies here, then we're going to be back in reopening up the Parks and Recreation and Open Space Plan. And that was one of the things, trying to maybe avoid doing some of that right now, having too much into other plans and things. So this has just got very minimal changes and not any with the goals and policies, which does also kind of, by the way, get into a little bit of some of the what you saw in my comments about fish and wildlife, what we what we'll talk about here in a little bit about recommending some of their stuff and what we're recommending not doing at this time.
Robert, I back to the Parks Recreation and Open Space. And I don't know that this is actually where where it would be. There's a lot of work going on right now with the creative creative district. And is that something that we would want to consider including something about the I know we addressed the cultural heritage in there, but we don't specifically call out the arts. And I'm wondering if we if we could do something along that line, so that we can, you know, fully support that. Because I think it's really going to be dynamic with the doors open program that the the county has adopted. And I think from a standpoint of organizations being able to tap those funds, if we have something in our comp plan, it could be very helpful in when they apply for those funds.
Yeah, that probably works probably in the land use chapter, because it's actually a district designation and stuff. So it kind of ties into actually into development regulations and all that kind of stuff as well. So yeah, if you want on the land use chapter, if you think you want us to take a look at adding something on the Creative Arts District, we can see if we can figure some language out for that and bring it back to you.
Yeah, I just would like it somewhere called out, too, you know, that we're supporting the arts and and that just because again, from grants that I've applied for, I know if you can say, you know, the city's comprehensive plan addresses that, it's helpful in applying for those grants.
It may also fit into the economic development, because a lot of that's a lot of this Creative Art District is about economic, trying to find places for artists to be able to be successful with their with their art and stuff in commercial.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, if you can find a place to insert something about that in there, I think that'd be helpful.
All right, transportation, circulation. Again, kind of talk about, we just recently, back in June, updated the 20 year plan. This has been revised to incorporate all that information. The one big difference between the comp plan and the 20 year transportation plan is, the 20 year transportation plan doesn't have to care about money. You can put whatever you want into our plans and stuff, and we did. But in the comp plan, the growth management has you be a little bit more realistic. So you have to look at your fiscal constraints when you look at your project list. And so we have to par it down to based on what is realistic in terms of fiscal and doing an analysis on that. And so that's the main difference. But otherwise, this basically follows a lot of what was in the transportation plan. And we kind of talked about this. And the way we're going to handle this, because like I said, I mentioned earlier, this will require a change to the ordinance for the transportation plan if council wants to do this. So what we'll do is, planning commission, you guys had said you want to propose this change. So we'll have this come along with it. It'll be kind of a separate piece. So we can verify if council wants to then incorporate it, we'll know what we need to do, because it will be more than just the comp plan. We'll have to add another layer of amending the transportation plan to update for consistency with it as well. So we'll kind of keep these things, like on the transportation plan, we'll keep these in a separate bucket, and they'll go forward in your recommendations. And then ultimately, if council wants to incorporate those, then we'll know that we're going to have to modify some of our process as to how this has to be adopted and stuff. So it's the most important thing to be aware of on that. All right, capital facilities and utilities. This used to be two chapters. I think we talked about this. It's been now combined into one, because there was-
Robert?
Yeah.
Commissioner Chairman Motikoff?
Thank you. On the previous slide, because I was not here when you discussed it, I'm trying to understand what the how this measured. Based on this language, it's not specified. That's if that's fair, like it's subjective. So there is no real way to understand, are we meeting the needs or not?
Yeah. So I mean, policies sometimes have a tendency not to, I mean, they tend to be some broad in nature, because you're trying to cover a wide range of things. So this was something that one of the commissioners had proposed, and the and the majority of the planning commission wanted to include on it. So he's not here tonight. So I don't know if you want to get a little bit more detail about what his thinking on it was. Might be, we might bring it up again at the October meeting. But I don't want to put words into his mouth as to what he was trying to do specifically, unless any of the other commissioners want to talk a little bit more about this.
Understood. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. As I mentioned, the capital of the city, one of the big things on this one is there was a bunch of green stuff actually incorporated into it. A lot of that PSC actually brought to us, as well as then looking at our new climate chapter, wanting to make sure that there was consistency between that. So a lot of the changes that you see in this, besides combining the two and cleaning it up, was to also incorporate more greening of the infrastructure, which also is consistent with legislative requirements, like for PSC happened to do as well as all the utilities are required to do and stuff. So we incorporated some of that in here as well. Natural environment. So this is one of the areas where Fish and Wildlife had a lot of comments, and I'll talk about that in a moment. But basically, this changes to the goals and policies, incorporated tree and climate policies, those are a lot of the big changes in it. And then you also had input for us that we incorporated into it. And then, as I mentioned, the Fish and Wildlife had comments. I wasn't planning to go through all of those things that are in there. You can see the staff's analysis. So I think more the way I'm going to, I want to present the question is, is there anything in there in the staff recommendations that you either want us to change, or do you not want us to make any of those? Or do you just want to identify anything specifically in there that maybe might want us to look at differently on that? So rather than going through all this, if just take the memo and and look at our recommendations, and is there anything you want to change in those recommendations that we made?
Any commissioners have any comments on this? I mean, perfectly honest, I haven't had the time to delve into it. Had other things come up since we only got it on Monday. So can we do that as the continued public hearing, maybe? I mean, the other commissioners may have something to offer, but I don't at this time.
Yeah, I mean, what we could, what might be helpful, because the hearing is going to continue, is we could incorporate those. And then if you want to undo those, we can take them out afterwards and stuff. Because like I said, there's a detailed analysis on this. And most of them do get into this. And a lot of them is just basically more about, some of it's actually, it's basically more related to Fish and Wildlife's mandates. But we were trying to be very careful that those things kind of fit within our current, at least what you'll see in most of the staff comment. If you don't want me to do anything with it, we can. It's just that the difficulty on this is then wanting the public to be able to have a chance to comment on it. So I was thinking about incorporating it so the public can comment on it as well. And then, again, if you want to change things off of that, we can certainly do that.
Any commissioners have anything on it?
No.
All right, shoreline master program. There was some comments from Fish and Wildlife on this, but we can't touch this one. You can't you can't change, those are all part of our shoreline master program. You can't change goals and policies on a shoreline master program through a GMA process. So they they ended up modifying those as just things for us to keep in mind when we have our next update on the shoreline master program, which will probably be in about three or four years, that they'll probably have a bunch more stuff. I suspect there'll actually be even more things from them, actually, by the time we get around to that. But as it is right now, this is not actually something we can really touch the goals and policies on. And then this other new chapter mentioned, this is kind of is a new element. It's added by the Growth Management Act. We weren't necessarily required to do it now. We could have waited till the next cycle. But we had adopted a climate action plan. And I think as we talked with you, there was kind of support, let's go ahead and incorporate it now, because we're going to eventually have to do this anyway. And it's kind of good to have this kind of reflect. It also kind of does fit a lot of our, you know, the whole Northwest woodland setting and stuff. This is kind of fairly consistent with that. So like I said, most of this is just based on that climate action plan. So that's all I've got. Happy to answer any other questions. Otherwise, I think you're ready to get into the testimony.
Commissioner Mesa?
I just had one comment on the Fish and Wildlife comments that we got back. I also didn't get a chance to thoroughly look at this, but just briefly looking at it. A lot of the comments kind of fall into using LID, L I D. Can you explain what that means?
Low Impact Development. So it's, yeah, I mean, we're actually already required to do it. So it actually mostly works through our stormwater regulation. So the idea is, you know, the old way of approaching stormwater is, you know, rain coming down, we would gather it up, and then we would like send it, in some cases, it would go through treatment. Or actually, in the old days, they just gathered it up, and then they just piped it and sent it right into the river. You're not allowed to do that anymore. Now you have to, under certain condition, under actually pretty, almost most conditions, you have to collect it up, you have to make sure that it's being released at a certain rate that is actually- rate that is actually mimicking more natural conditions, because you know when water hits a hard surface, it actually wants to roll off of it really fast, versus if you've got a lot of vegetation and stuff. So there's these new, the stormwater regulations make you collect the water, control how fast it can roll off of your property, and then also treat that water, and then before it can get released into receiving bodies, which for us is like Little Bear, primarily, I think, Seminole River, Little Bear Creek may be some as well, but, so we have these restrictions. And low-impact development then is taking this further in mimicking nature's conditions by trying to reduce impervious surfaces, and trying to, instead of collecting it, trying to as much put it back into the ground, because, you know, the old way again was just always gathering it and sending it down. The new requirements that we do is that you have to try to first try to infiltrate it back in like under natural conditions. I will mention this, though, there is a challenge, because much of the Puget Sound region's got clay, so a lot of water doesn't infiltrate very easily in here, but your first option is that you try to do that first and foremost, and then also try to reduce impervious surfaces and stuff like that. And so, like I said, some of this is kind of redundant, because it's already built into our stormwater requirements that we have to follow. But I think emphasizing some of those, particularly in our natural, in our environmental element, and just emphasizing what we already have to do is actually not a bad thing to do.
Yeah, I agree with that assessment. And then the second thing that jumped out at me, which is a comment that I have also raised in the past, is about adding words around, like one that I see here says, adding for safe pedestrian and wildlife movement throughout Woodinville. So incorporating language that explicitly calls out that we may build overpasses or underpasses to facilitate wildlife moving around, as opposed to them going through traffic, was one example. So I would be supportive of adding language like that.
Yeah, the one challenge, and I think they even recognized it in there, that's actually geared more towards rural areas, because in here, we don't necessarily have those corridors. Most of our corridors are actually the streams and rivers and stuff, so it's not likely you're going to see us building those overpasses over the roads and stuff, because we just really don't have those, plus it's extremely expensive, and it doesn't work quite as well in an urban environment as far as, you know, the extent on some of those things. Having said that, though, we do have to replace coverts, I mean, those things do have to be done, that's a mandatory requirement. So having that in there, I understand, we've just got to be kind of careful about it, because people might read that into things that actually aren't practical in an urban setting necessarily.
Yeah, definitely, I agree with that also. We do have some wildlife, even though that we are more of an urban setting, like I hear once in a while of black bear sightings, or there's always raccoons and cougars and bobcats. So we do, we do still have wildlife, so I think it would make sense to incorporate some of that language. And I did see that one of the recommendations said wherever feasible, so it's not, you know, where it makes sense, I think. It's something good to add. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right, that will take us to the public testimony portion of the public hearing. While Yvonne's bringing the sign-in sheet forward, when I call your name, come forward, state your name, whether you live in the city of Woodinville or not, and you will have five minutes, and the time's up there for you. First up, Ahmad Amiri.
Thank you very much for your time again. In the comprehensive plan that you have, I want to refer to page 27, if I remember that, regarding single-family resident R1. One of the things is that we were saying, we're getting away with ADU, and we're trying to put another, bring another house up to 35,000 square feet, and then after 35 square feet, if it's larger than 35,000 square feet, then bring in, you know, put another housing there. My feeling is, we need more clarification on that one. If you're putting one house, how are we going to do that? How eventually are we going to subdivide that? Is that going to be individual lots for it? I don't see a clarification on that. You wanted to look at it and see, again, are, another thing is, are we focusing in regard to homeowners or not? And then, if you're focusing on homeowners, if you create some kind of a way that they can compete with big corporation or big companies that come in, that is a good way of keeping our prices check, check on balances. And it's a common sense that we give them a little bit of the, a little bit of the power to do what they can do. And again, here we go again, and I'm talking about the road, no matter where we're going to do, whatever we're going to do, and that road, it becomes important, and I'm sure it is already in mind of all of you. And I'm just bringing it in, whatever you're doing with this comprehensive plan after 40 years, I'm talking about as a realtor, we have to look at it, things are changing rapidly, and I understand that, you understand it, and there is no doubt about that. But how are we going to do this? I remember almost 30 years ago, we had same roads, and we're bringing too many apartments. I mean, in a small portion, we put, let's say, 50 apartments. Of course, we all know that, that traffic is going to get worse, we already have it. It takes me from my house, which is right where museum is, behind the museum, just to go to the freeway, it takes me four o'clock, it takes me 15 minutes, 12 minutes, 13 minutes. You have to look at all of those things, of course, and I'm sure all of you working on that, and I appreciate that. And I think we need a little bit more clarification, a little more look into it, but you're going to make a decision for the next 20 years? Things are going fast. I remember when I was at the university, going to graduate school, almost 45 years ago, 50 years, 45 years ago, there was only one Charlie here, and there was a, just one street, and now look at it now, go look back at the pictures. I think it's a time to look at the whole thing and make sense of your program. Because if you don't use your common sense, really, you'll be, you're going to have lots of difficulty with the roads, you're going to have a, computation is going to die out because, and all of this, you have to look into it. I guess that's what I'm bringing into your attention, that this comprehensive plan has to be looked at much more carefully than it is, it looks like, at the face value right now. Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Amiri. Next up, Allison Farmer.
Allison Farmer, a resident outside city limits. As a spooky season, I thought I'd introduce you to a new word, hauntology. It's a range of ideas referring to the return or persistent of elements from the social, cultural past, as in the manner of a ghost that continues to haunt the present and shape the future. This city's been haunted by the lack of affordable housing and its continuous avoidance at providing any for over a decade. It's the focus and debate of many meetings, and it's the main contributor for our housing jobs imbalance. Many of the same affordable housing needs were listed in the 2015 comprehensive plan, yet developments built in then don't have any low income. In 2019, the Planning Commission wanted to include 10.6 affordable in the DA for the Old Town. They were told the owner did not want to, and there was no affordable housing policy, so it never happened. Same happened during Woodin Creek discussions, Harvest, the schoolhouse. Main Street are now using a pool of four tiny affordable units, neither 10% or like-for-like to make their townhome proposal when Old Town look attractive and reduce their parking obligations. This city's now in a big mess, needing to add 1,813 low-income units on top of all the pipeline units that already satisfy our total GMA requirements. And this self-created mess is now being used as an excuse to rezone our general business area into mixed use, what you call EMU, which hasn't even passed as EMU yet. Now it's not the time to rezone more areas as residential, especially affordable business ones. We're losing affordable business areas at a fast rate and already losing more businesses and gaining. You can still promote economic development in this area without housing. We have not even seen the effect of all the thousands of housing units going in at the remaining phases of Woodin Creek, Woodgate, Garden District, and Heritage Developments. Our roads are already gridlocked with a non-existent public transport, and the transport section in this comp plan has no firm indications how that will be fixed. Rezoning GP is just kicking the problem down the road. It increases the land value, making affordability harder, and loses a valuable land asset for future development of larger retail and entertainment spaces. 1,303 of these low-income units needed are at the extremely low end, 0.30% AMI. Those units still haunting us from the 2015 comp plan, specifically policy H6 states and efforts to be focused on very low-income, 30% AMI, where the greatest need exists. These are considered supportive units, and they need state help and likely public land. We were not, we were told at the beginning of the year that the state would make allowances for this. If all these units are not actually going into GP, then we should not be indicating they are 100% R. Affordability needs to be inclusionary and expanded citywide, not just confined, so not just to confine low-income people to apartments downtown, which adds to our racial disparity. We also need to stop using incentives to obtain affordable housing, it's obviously not working. It's now given developers a bargaining chip at the expense of other necessary things like parking and taxes, as we try to fill a desperate need. It's impacting the living quality, diversity, and survivability of our city. In the housing section of the COP plan incentive programs, right at the end, that needs to be cut and replaced with a citywide minimum of affordable 20% mandate. Adopting an affordable mandate will affect what capacity exists for the GMA, regardless of historic creation rates, and start to repair some of the damage done by past policy failures. Other cities have affordable mandates, and as we now have an obligation from the state to provide affordable housing, we no longer need to use incentives like this. Multiple council members have suggested a cry percentage, the COP plan is missing it. Now is the time to try and bring our city back into balance, now is the time to say no to incentives. Affordable housing is not a public benefit, it's a necessity. Putting the intention of a citywide affordable mandate into the COP plan is the start, and hopefully, it will not just be ignored like the 2015 COP plan, but appear on the city council's work agenda in the next two weeks and adopted before any other further DA is assigned. It's time to put a stop to haunting of the haunting developer greed at the expense of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that is everybody that has signed up. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to make public comment? Please come forward, state your name, whether you live in the city limits or not, and you have five minutes.
Thank you, sir. My name is Tiffany Campbell. I live in Campbellry, so I do live in the city limits. There was a couple of things I wanted to address, I took notes on, and I had a few questions. This is my first time coming here, obviously.
I'm sorry?
This is my first time attending this, anything like this, so.
So if you have anything to address on the public hearing?
Yes, I do. I would like to address the schools and the children, to begin with. To my knowledge, when I moved here, we were between one and three, Mercer Allen being the top school, and the state, us being the third, I'm not too sure who's in between. Is that still current? Do you know?
That's, we don't have anything to do with the school district?
Okay. I heard you speak about the children and proper, well, let's speak about the children and what you spoke about with Redmond. Did you see on the news about the children stealing packages off of people's porches? It was on the news. Children are out of control. These children are out of control. They are going on people's porches and taking their medications. Now, I'm not saying here in this town, but in Redmond and in Kirkland, it's been on Q13. They are taking medications off of people's porches, they are having other, I don't know who's sending them, but a little girl and a little boy went up the stairs, stole this man's medication and some of his Amazon product packages, then found out it was nothing they wanted, threw it all onto the earth. Now, that's all tainted, there's medications now into the ground. It's ridiculous. And I feel like having a daughter of my own, who is now going to be going into the school district, because she is going to be five, she's going to be four, so I'm having her in a head start, I'd like to know, like, how we plan on keeping this community safe, and keeping this community how it is, because I personally have never had a package stolen off my porch. I don't know about anyone around me. If anything, my neighbors, if we find something on our porch, it's labeled and put out for someone to pick it up and take it back, or they, or one of us helps the other, if they don't, if there's a language barrier, my neighbors across the hall are Hispanic, they do not speak English, they left something from Chewy saying, this isn't our package, can someone return it? They didn't know what to do. So I offered, because I speak English, it's my first language. I know Chewy, I contacted Chewy, I contacted the company, I used to go through Chewy when I had an animal before I had my daughter, and I had it sent back to that person. They had me donate that project, I donated it to the office, who then, in fact, had cats, I don't have any cats. I don't have any, I have a fish, not that that matters, but where I'm going with this is, the other thing we spoke about was, you were speaking about the animals in the community, and the bears, and keeping them safe, and the water. I know for fact, when I went out of town, I went to Eastern Washington, and I came back, there is bleach in our water. I don't know if you're aware of this, I don't know if that's a proper way to filter our water, but I do not use bleach in my home, and it was a strong smelling scent of bleach. And I did not notice that before, because I'm around it every day, but when I went out of town, and was around different water in Wenatchee, and came back, I could definitely smell it, I have a nose like a wolf. So that was one of the things, there's lots of topics on here. The most important thing, I think, is our children, is everyone's children, because they're the future. I'm curious to know about the schooling and how we are teaching them, if we are teaching them about transgender, if that's where we're going with this future, if we're trying to displace them in what they are born as, or what they, what everyone else identifies as. Because I feel it is very important for people to be strong in their beliefs, their culture, and their heritage, and know that what they are is okay, and they don't have to be followed, or they don't have to follow, they need to be leaders in what they want to be, and not be bullied in what they're supposed to be told they need to be. And with that, I am finished. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Those items are for the school district, not the-
Okay, but this is part of the school district, or no?
No, you'd have to go to the North Shore School District.
Okay, I'll put that down also, I'll contact them also, because I already have an appointment, I already have her signed up in Head Start.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else here to make public comment for the public hearing on the comprehensive plan? All right, seeing no one, staff has recommended that we continue the public hearing to the October 23 meeting.
And yeah, I do move that the public hearing be continued to that October 23, 2024 meeting.
Second? We have a motion by Commissioner Krebs, and second by Commissioner Mesa, to continue the public hearing to October 23, 2024. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, the motion passes. With that, we have come to the end of the agenda, and we are adjourned. Thank you.